Okay. We were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 3rd, 2018. I'd asked that you pre-arrive for a brief invocation to be followed by the pledge allegiance. Tonight, as we entered the month of December, we are all ever mindful that we have entered the gracious holiday and Christmas season that so many people look forward to and which has so much meaning in so many people's lives. We just ask that our season in Batavia be one of great joy and appreciation and worship and knowledge and sharing and that, once again, as our community has in the past, rises to the occasion and that we take care of all those within our community who are less fortunate and in need of some support. And as we will see here in just a moment, we are busy trying to do that. We have Mr. Bailey in the audience who's going to give us an update on the Christmas toy program for needy children. Also tonight, we want to remember those from our country who are serving in foreign nations in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. As always, we ask for guidance and direction and understanding and vision as we act on the items of business before us, knowing that in each of our hearts and minds, we're here to do what is in the best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Alderman Brown, you want to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
McFadden.
Here.
The record reflects that thirteen of the fourteen elected aldermen are present accounted for, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which is now our meeting reminder. I'm to remind everyone, if you're going to speak tonight, whether you're on the city council or somebody that wishes to address this in the audience, please use one of the microphones because, as you know, these are televised and if we don't speak into the microphone, it's very difficult for people who aren't listening on TV to hear. So we want to try to make this as inclusive and as fair amount of conversation that can be heard as possible. Okay, moving to item number five. Items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda? Alderman Atack.
I don't have anything this evening, Your Honor.
I've got one. I need to put as item 6A, a brief presentation by Mr. Bailey on the Christmas toy program. He's got someplace else he needs to go in a hurry and I got to get him in and out of here.
All right. I move that we amend the agenda as suggested by Mayor Schalke.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Chansett, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, moving to six, consent agenda. Alderman Atack.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file historic preservation commission minutes for October 8th, 2018. Committee of the whole minutes for October 23rd, 2018, and November 8th, 2018. Approvals, November 30th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $868,653.25. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,492,041.73. City council minutes for November 19th, 2018. Approval of the 2019 meeting calendar. Resolution 18-128-R authorizing purchase of two 2020 Peterbilt truck cassis through Sourcewell contract in the amount of $185,070. Ordinance 18-68 authorizing surplus of police department vehicles. Ordinance 18-77 amending the municipal code relating to water usage rates. Ordinance 18-78 amending the municipal code relating to sanitary sewer rates. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Alderman Brown.
Yeah, Your Honor, I just want to make a comment on item number, or item F, which is the approval of the 2019 meeting calendar. In case anybody's interested as to how much time the city council puts into their work and such, there's roughly 153 meetings on the upcoming calendar. Those would include items like the city council, the committee of the whole bicycle commission, historic preservation plan commission. Every meeting that there is possible that we could attend, should we desire, some were required to, some were not. I did not include the adjudication in that 153 count, but it is actually down now, a little bit from what it was a couple of years ago when we held the committee structure meetings with doing the committee of the whole. It's down a little bit, so we're at roughly 153. I just wanted to make mention of that.
For everybody's understanding, this is an annual presentation by Alderman Brown. And I appreciate him doing it because it certainly, I think, sends a message loud and clear to everybody out there, how many nights a week or during the year the city council is expected to be down here or could be down here. So hopefully, everybody that is interested just heard what you had to say. Okay, we need to call the roll then on that?
Yep. Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Okay, 6A, Mr. Bailey, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council, and good evening, Batavia. Where do I start? My daughter's a speech teacher, coach at Geneva High School. Thank you. I don't hold that against her, but so on. She says, "Dad, you have five minutes to talk to the community about the table, about the toy drive." I says, "Okay." And then she says, "I should have looked at what you were going to say, so you didn't say something that we didn't do or are going to have to do." I go, "Okay, Brittany, I'm okay with that." Looking at the table here tonight, what can I say to the council is thank you, thank you, thank you. We have about a little over 600 children here in Batavia that we're going to take care of. A little over 200 families here in Batavia that you, the council, are going to provide toys for. But not only you are going to provide toys for these children, it's the Batavia people that stepped up and made, again, another successful toy drive, which will be this Sunday, December 9th, at 2:00. The mayor's a historian here in Batavia, and I've been kind of practicing and looking about when this all started. Many years I've come here and talked to the community and I says, "I think this is the 54th year." That was wrong. I come back another year and I find some more information, I go, "Yep, this is it. 63 years." Wrong again, Batavia. Ladies and gentlemen, Batavia, this year is the 70th year that Batavia has put this program on. 70 years. It didn't start with some of my partners back there, the firemen, or a couple of ladies or whatever in Batavia. It didn't start with the Haynes family, it didn't start with the Johnsons, and it didn't start with Mildred Bailey. It started with this community as Batavians. The Batavia people kept this program going. I will tell you that no other community to the north, to the south, to the west or the east has ever put a program together like that for the children in their communities. Something about Batavia that says that this is never going to die. I can tell you that on October 15th, I talked to Laura. I says, "Laura, I can't do it this year because I have no place to go." She says, "Calm down, we'll find a spot." Two more weeks passed till we're almost to the November, and my wife and daughter come to me and they says, "Dad, we're going to have a toy drive." I go, "Where?" They started beating this poor lady up over here and the mayor because I was out of town. I got a phone call when I came back to town and two people had decided to give us a spot. I know it couldn't be B.E.I. in the old Walgreens building because someone else is going to go in there. So two other folks here in Batavia decided to give us a spot. They weren't quite big enough to do the toy drive in brand fashion, is what we've always done. I got a call from B.E.I. and they says, "Baby, are you having a toy drive this year?" I go, "Don't think so because I have no place to go." He says, "Yes, you do. We got a spot for you. Come down and take a look." Looked at it with my wife and daughter and they says, "When you want, when can you, when can you move in?" I go, "I can move in now." He says, "I said, 'How much time do I need?'" You know what he did? He handed me the keys. He says, "It's all yours. Start tonight." And that's where we've been. How can I thank Batavia? And how can I thank B.E.I. for what they have stepped up over the years, given us a spot where we can have this toy drive? Again, about 600 children that will go through the toy drive this year. 143 First Street is the address at 2:00. We will also have another day for those parents that can't come on the 9th, we will open it up, so every child, every family that lives in Batavia will have a Merry Christmas. Again, thanks, Batavia, for what you do. Don't thank the Baileys, don't thank the Dubises, but thank the community for what you live in that's never let this program cease because they think about their neighbor, they think about their friend, they think about a relative that's going to have a merry, merry Christmas and that will never leave Batavia as long as we have Batavia people here. Thank you very much.
Well, I told Roy not to run off till I got through doing this. I have in my hand here two different envelopes with a nice assortment of money in them that was delivered today to me by two lifelong Batavians, born and raised, and they know all about this, and they said they wanted to make these very generous donations to the toy drive, but they didn't want any credit, they don't want their name mentioned, they don't want anything, they just want to be part of the good things that Roy and this group are doing. So on behalf of those folks, we thank you, and we would certainly be happy if others wanted to step forward and do the same thing, but the money is starting to roll in pretty good, so, but we can need, we can take as much as we can get, I guess is right?
The need is from my wife and daughter. It's pretty runniness, and that's the reason they told me to hurry up and take your Santa Claus suit off and get over and start putting toys on tables and, you know, my job is washing toys, putting toys together, putting batteries on, and going from my partners back here to pick up toys. Thanks, Chief, for letting me have these folks on my team. They're dressed tonight like firemen, but when they working for me, we have different outfits that they wear, they're elves. So I can't say enough about those ladies and gentlemen behind me for what they do. We're in need right now. I just got a text message from my, from my team over there and they're telling me that six to 10, or six to teens, boys and girls, are what they're really short in right now. Six-year-old boys to teen boys, which is 16, six-year-old girls to teen girls is what they're in need of right now. I invite everybody here, anybody in the community, to stop over from 1:00 until 2:00 to take a look and kind of see what has transpired with this program. I will ask you, if you're not working the toy drive at 2:00 when people start coming in, you'll be asked to leave. So I don't allow any pictures after 2:00, but if you're there and you would like to take pictures of any of the tables or the rooms from 1:00 until 2:00, would love to have you. Look to see everybody out there, and if there's any questions or anything I can answer, I got one more minute.
You better get going.
Thanks. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, moving then to item number seven. It's my honor to submit the appointments of paid-on-call fire department recruits James Mattis and Matthew Jordan to become members of the Batavia Paid-on-Call Fire Department. I entertain a motion for that approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Chief, Deike.
Unfortunately, only James Mattis was able to attend tonight, so I'll bring Matthew Jordan to your office to get his word in at some time, Mayor. James, if you can come forward, please. James lives in North Aurora. He has completed the fire science program at Willbonce Community College. He's also an emergency medical technician.
Can you stand here and raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, James Mattis.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
Position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do Somwe swear.
Do Somwe swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. All right, moving to item number eight, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wishes to address the city council? All right, then, moving to item number nine, which is presentation by the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and we're very honored to have Holly Deikman, the executive director and president.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you this evening. I don't know if you have a choice, but I'm on the agenda, so here I am. I wanted to present you with just a couple of the upcoming events at the Batavia Chamber, and we are honored to have a new business owner here to present as well. So on Thursday, we have the ribbon cutting for Paula's, our former alderman, at 4:00 PM, which is Thursday, December 6th. Her location is the old Batavia Main Street offices, just below the bridge. On Tuesday, December 11th, is the Batavia Women in Business Holiday Networking Luncheon that will be held at the Lincoln Inn. We are collecting toys as well for the toy drive and for the United Way Adopt a Family Program and gift certificates. All the proceeds from our raffle, we put together like three tables full of raffle items, and all the raffle ticket sales get split between those two organizations as well. On Wednesday, December 12th, at 7:30 AM, we have our morning networking club, which is called BC Squared, at the Comfort Inn. Also, on Wednesday, the 12th, we have our Holiday Networking It at K. Hollis Jewelers, and that's at 5:00 PM. On Friday, December 14th, we have another ribbon cutting at 2:00 PM for Black Cactus Print House. They are moving a showroom into what, they have expanded a showroom into what used to be Bhuta Gandhi and Me on Wilson Street. On Thursday, December 12th, we have our HR series, the last of that, with Valley Industrial Association at 7:30 AM, and that will be a roundtable discussion on all things human resources. And then I'd like for you to save the date for Thursday, January 24th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, is the Annual Inspire Awards event, where the Batavia Chamber of Commerce awards the Citizen of the Year, the Spirit of Batavia Award, and OLE Awards for businesses that have invested in our community. So the Citizen of the Year this year was selected by past citizens in a very secretive room here in City Hall a few weeks ago, and they selected Georgine Cawth O'Dwyer. She has been a longstanding servant of our community through many programs, through Holy Cross Church, the Historical Society, or the Historical Society, as she calls it. She's also an ambassador for the business community through the Batavia Chamber, and she's just an overall super awesome lady. So she is our Batavia 2018 Citizen of the Year. Our Spirit of Batavia Award is given annually now by the same committee that selects the Citizen of the Year to a group that has gone above and beyond as a nonprofit within our community, and this year it's being awarded to the Batavia United Way, most in consideration for their development of the 211 program that has been brought to our community in November. So we will be honoring them, and then we are giving out eight OLE Awards this year for businesses that have either redeveloped a place, expanded, or built a new facility here in Batavia. So please join us that evening. Tickets are flying off of our website, so make sure that you register soon. And other than that, I hope all of you have a wonderful holiday, and I think it's awesome what all of you have done in order to donate to the toy drive, so thank you very much for that. And without further ado, we have two wonderful owners here from Clean Pest Solutions. We have Samantha, Chris, and Finn here to talk about Clean Pest Solutions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Samantha Bowe, and thank you very much for having me this evening. Appreciate the opportunity. I, along with my husband, Chris, and our daughter, Finn, we own and operate Clean Pest Solutions. We're a full-service, integrated pest management company right here in Batavia. What integrated pest management means is we use the minimum amount of product for the maximum effect. We don't broadcast spray and prey like the exterminators of old. We use a methodical and targeted treatment regime. We treat residential and commercial spaces. We're clean, safe, and effective, and we're dedicated to excellent client service. When we moved to the area four years ago from Maui, we started a company called Mosque Marketing. Chris was a consultant for a pest control company in Chicago's North Shore, and he was able to learn the business and increase their revenue by 40% for three years running. That's how we started Clean Pest Solutions, over Pad Thai Village. We have four years of pest control experience between us, and Chris and myself, we also have over 40 years of marketing and customer service experience. Our most recent experience in marketing sales was in Maui. I was a marketing supervisor for Starwood at two of their most successful properties, and Chris was a top sales executive at the Marriott Maui Ocean Club and a director of marketing. The training we received there was second to none, and the quality, consistency, and the loyalty that they maintain is how, what we base our business on. We listen to our clients and use every precaution, but that being said, the products we use are child, pet, and family safe. We treat mice, ants, bees, wasps, this is a long list, rats, mosquitoes, termites, cockroaches, ticks, squirrels, bedbugs, and up to 80 other pests. We use monitoring, mechanical, and biological controls for an ecologically safe and effective use of the most advanced products to date. We use a HEPA filter vacuum when cleaning up rodent and insect debris and waste. This is the safest way to clean up potentially hazardous conditions. We're based in Batavia. Our phone number is 630-621-3333. We're available from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 7:00 AM to noon on Saturdays. Our website is cleanpestsolutions.com. Our email is info@cleanpestsolutions.com. And we chose to live and start a business in Batavia because we wanted to be closer to family. We moved from Hawaii. My husband is originally from Oswego, though, and we love the Fox River Valley region. Batavia's a great fit for what we wanted for our family and our business. In the next year, we plan on hiring one, possibly two employees. When we started Clean Pest Solutions this year, we hit the ground running and have already exceeded our goals for our first year. In the new year, we expect to double our revenue, and our 10-year goal is to be grossing over a million in annual sales. Again, I really appreciate the invitation to come speak here this evening. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Well, first of all, you need to give us your email address, your phone number, and where people can contact you.
Okay. Email is info@cleanpestsolutions.com. Our website is cleanpestsolutions.com, and our phone number is 630-621-3333.
And you're open seven days a week, or you can be called at any time?
Yeah, absolutely, and we're always open for questions and advice as well. We're here to help.
Any questions from the city council, comments? I would, knowing the number of pests and whatever that we have in this community, I would think you're going to have quite a good business.
We've been very busy. Yeah.
It would be.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of different variables that come into that arena when you start hearing about it, and so I'm very pleased to have you in our town, and we wish you many years of business growth and success. Alderman Brown, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, you touched on it a little bit. I was glad to hear her say that they moved back here because of family, because I was thinking, you come to Batavia from Hawaii. It must be an awful lot of pressure.
It's a hard sell. It's a hard sell.
So, anybody else? Well, thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving then, do we have somebody from Northwestern here to talk about the stroke unit? If you'd come up, please. You're not Tammy Presley, that's who I have to go in here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having me here. I'm just going to pull up a PowerPoint real quick.
Can you tell us your name and who you are?
Yes. Laura, do you mind helping me pull the PowerPoint? My name is Ryan Kyler. I'm the Stroke Education Coordinator at Northwestern Medicine Center, DuPage Hospital, and Delnor Hospitals. I'm here with Ann Lindstrom, the program director for the stroke program, here to talk about stroke community outreach. So thank you very much for having me out here to talk about that, and really want to talk about a little bit of data for the city of Batavia, and talk a little bit about stroke and what the program is. So before I get started, we always like to ask a rhetorical question. When I say the word stroke, what do you think about? What kind of images come up in your head? Generally, when you say that word, most people think of stroke as an elderly person's disease, but stroke can affect anybody. Stroke is a 41-year-old man who's at work, very healthy, doesn't really have a medical history, runs five days a week. It's a Tuesday, and he's making a voicemail call to a client, and as he's making the call, as he's finishing up the voicemail, he starts to slur his words, starts to not make sense, so he hangs up the phone, he thinks maybe his blood sugar's kind of low, goes to the break room to get something to eat, maybe he'll feel better, goes into the next meeting, and then the people he works with luckily recognize that he's not talking right, and something's wrong, so they call 911. The mobile stroke unit's able to show up, we're able to give him great care, and he's able to be back at work a week later. Stroke is a 31-year-old woman who's out riding her bike, she has two young kids, and she falls off her bike and injures her neck. Over the next couple of days, she's adjusting it a lot, trying to get the kinks out, and then all of a sudden she has difficulty swallowing and extreme dizziness, so she ends up in the hospital with a stroke in the back of her brain. And stroke is a 64-year-old man who's at a retirement party with his wife, and he leaves And stroke is a 64-year-old man who's at a retirement party with his wife, and he leaves early, about an hour before his wife, and she comes home to find him on the porch confused, unable to get into the house, unable to figure out how to open the door. Stroke could really be anybody, and stroke affects everybody. So, while we're out here talking about our community stroke outreach program that we want to put together to help the cities we serve, really, we're out here because about 795,000 people a year have a stroke. That's about a stroke every 40 seconds. It's a very common disease. It's the number five leading cause of death. However, in the country, it's the number one cause of medical disability. As a country, we spend about $36 billion a year on the medical disability that results from stroke, and we know that the research shows that the faster people get to the hospital, the better. The more care we can give them, the more options we can give them. And research also shows that activating 911, calling EMS, is the safest and quickest way to get to the hospital. Yet, despite this, we know that national estimates show that only about 50% of the time, people having a stroke utilize 911. The other 50% of the time on par, they're going with family, they're driving themselves, which not only is unsafe, but it slows down care, and our goal is to get people recognized that they're having a stroke and to get them to care as quickly as possible. So, really, as a stroke center, both at CDH and Delnor, as a stroke program, it's important that we reach out and serve the communities that we care for, and it's vitally important that we educate the public on stroke awareness, so the ability to recognize a stroke. There's a study out there that shows about 37% of people can't name even one sign of a stroke, and stroke can vary based on the individual, so we educate people how to recognize it, and then when they do recognize it, we help them to make the decision to have the knowledge to say, hey, I'm going to call 911. That's the right thing to do, and it's the safest thing to do. The reason why that is, is you hear the term a lot of the time, "time is brain." Really, if you throw all these numbers up here with the neurons and the synapses, which are the connections between the brain cells, those are big numbers, but it's hard to quantify. Researchers of the American Heart Association were able to take those numbers and equate them to accelerated aging in your brain that correlates how many brain cells have been lost as we age normally. So, for every minute that your brain is not getting oxygen and you're having a stroke, you lose about almost 2 million brain cells, but your brain accelerates in aging about 3.1 weeks. For the average stroke, and this is out of a national database, you lose about 1.2 billion brain cells, and the amount of accelerated aging in your brain is 36 years. So, that leads to cognitive decline, it leads to medical disability. And so, what we want to do is, we wanted to look at the cities we serve, we wanted to look at some key data points. We wanted to look at the percentage of stroke patients that have come from each city we serve, the percentage of them that call 911, and of those that call 911, we wanted to look at, how long does it take them from when they recognize their symptoms to when they call 911? We wanted to present this data in front of the city councils that we serve, and then talk about our outreach program and how we can work together to best serve the cities. So, looking at this, this is Batavia's data. What we're looking at here is, this is all the stroke patients that came from the city of Batavia. It's about 58 patients from January 2017 to July 18. 60% of them called 911 for stroke. Comparing to the average for all the cities in the Delnor primary service area, it's 13% greater, so the average is about 47%. That's a very good number to be up there, however, that still represents 40% of people, four out of 10, that when recognizing they're having a stroke, are having family members drive them, maybe they're waiting and driving themselves or finding some other means, and that slows down the time and sometimes limits their options for when they get to the hospital. The next thing I want to look at is, of those 60% of patients that call 911, how long does it take, on average, from when they are recognizing the symptoms to when they're calling 911? And it's, on average, about 37 minutes, from when they recognize their symptoms and they're calling 911. In this data set, though, it's important to say, there are some times we see that are within the range of two, six, 12 hours a day, when people recognize their symptoms and activate care. So, our goal is really to increase the amount of people that are calling 911 and help them to recognize so they can call quicker. And what we want to do is, take a look at the data, show it to the city councils, and really come before you guys to get some feedback, and we want to talk about how we can best work together to reach out to the city of Batavia. A little example here, this is a program that is funded by the Northwestern Foundation. It is supported by my role as a Stroke Education Coordinator. It's a dedicated role. I'm a registered nurse with a critical care background in stroke. The goal is to work with each city council, because every city is different. We want to find a way, we can go out to service clubs, and we can talk about stroke that way, but are there ways we could reach the city of Batavia that you guys would know? That are there formal leaders, informal leaders to work with? Is there a way to get on maybe social media, maybe to work in the schools, maybe to work with local businesses, to really get education built in a meaningful way for the city of Batavia, to then show over time that we're helping people, we're helping them to not only prevent stroke, which we'll show in a second, but also to recognize it, over time increase those numbers. So, just a quick example, people always ask, what sorts of education would you give? We're going to, of course, talk about recognition, talk about calling 911, but we're always going to factor in stroke prevention as well. So, an example of what we would cover in whatever different modality we would need is Life Simple Seven. This is from the American Heart Association, and we cover these concepts when we're doing the stroke education, talking about managing blood pressure, controlling cholesterol, reducing blood sugar, getting active, eating better, losing weight, and stopping smoking. Seven simple ways that the American Heart Association has identified to prevent stroke, and then when we reach out and talk to people about how to recognize a stroke, we would talk about be fast. So, if anybody has a sudden loss of balance, sudden vision loss in one eyes or both eyes, if they have an uneven face, if one side of their face is drooping, sudden arm weakness or weakness on one side of the body, or sudden speech difficulties, and that could be slurred speech or sounding confused, time to call 911. And so, that's an example of some of the education we would give, but our goal is to get out here in front of you, show you the data specific to Batavia, and then ask for your feedback, and then, moving forward, once you've thought about it, if there are specific people that we could work with, the goal is for us to work together. We want to make education that is meaningful to the city of Batavia. If there's anybody passionate about stroke, anybody that wants to work together, we'd love to collaborate and find unique and different ways, a couple of different ways, to reach the residents of Batavia, to help educate them about stroke, and make an intentional plan for how we do stroke education. Are there any questions?
So, are you telling us, then, if a service club in town wants to have you come and talk, you'll come in and put out a program for various organizations within the community about this subject?
Of course. Anybody who wants us to come out and talk, if there's other modalities to use, getting in the schools, whatever works for the city of Batavia. If anybody's interested, our goal is to serve them. It's a dedicated role to community outreach, to get out and talk about stroke and help educate people.
Well, as you know, the city of Batavia helps run the Tri-City Ambulance Service, which serves Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles, so we're obviously very interested in working with you on this particular project. So, I'll certainly keep this in mind myself as a resource if somebody says, do you know a good program I can bring before my service club or my organization? I will certainly suggest that maybe they get in contact with you. Do you have like a number that you could say over TV here that people could maybe take down if they're watching and call you if they wanted to set up a program?
To set up a program, the number is (630) 933-FAST. Also, there's an email that is open that anybody can reach out to if they're interested. It is stroke, S-T-R-O-K-E, education, E-D-U-C-A-T-I-O-N, at nm.org. So, they can reach out, anybody watching can also reach out too if they're interested, and any sort of feedback, anybody who wants to reach out after you've thought about it to work together, service organizations, local Chamber of Commerce, schools, any way to reach the residents of Batavia is our goal to help out. Any other questions?
Alderman, ATEC?
Have you, do you go to places like the Homestead? A retirement center like the Homestead?
Of course, we could, any way to reach the people of Batavia, we'd be happy to do so.
As you know, I'm the chairman of the Tri-City Ambulance Board, and Alderman Wolf sits on that with me, and I would just tell you that, at least what we've been shared with, you've already had some pretty interesting success with what the stroke unit that we have running the valley here is doing. So, I had off to you for the work that you've already performed, and hopefully this will spread. We had one of our former aldermen have a need for your services, and he came down and helped make a video about it, as you probably are aware. So, I think we're engaged and certainly want to help push this along as best we can, and certainly, given what has been the record so far, it's something that I would certainly encourage any Batavian who feels the symptoms or has some great need, don't hesitate to call 911 and help us, nothing else, get you going, to get in here and help them out, so.
Excellent, and thank you. The team's done great work with the mobile stroke unit, and certainly being able to partner and do intercept service has really been fantastic, so thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you for coming down.
All right, thank you so much.
All right. Okay, moving then to item number 11, which is Resolution 18-125-R, awarding downtown improvement grant to Batavia Platforms Property. Who's got this one?
You want to take it, Susan?
Yeah, I can do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several, four, it seems like several months ago, it's been a little while now, the Tomley Building was sold to Batavia Platform Properties LLC, and what's before us tonight is a downtown improvement grant, which is part of our development program in downtown Batavia to help business owners, building owners, bring their buildings up to a better standard. So, this grant was submitted to us recently by the, is it Koch?
Coke.
Coke, thank you, I never know for sure. Cokes, and they own the building now, and so they're asking for this downtown improvement grant to fix things like construct floor support, pour concrete floor in the lower level, redesign and reconstruct the interior staircase, install a new tin ceiling, install new lightings, construct electrical system improvements, install new flooring, replace old furnace and ductwork. And so, the total expenditures of this is about $52,773, and the total of grant request is $25,000, or 50% of the total expenditures, whichever is less. And so, that's what's before us tonight, this downtown improvement grant, and so, if you'd like to say anything about the building or the grant, that would be great.
Sure.
Let me make one clarification.
Sure.
The request was for $25,000, but this grant...
Chris, use the mic.
Chris, you got to use the mic.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I want to be real brief, because I really want to let the Cokes talk about their project and their schedule, but just for clarification, the grant request was for $25,000, which is the maximum.
Right.
But, the actual grant award that's being recommended is $23,368. So, do you want to wait till after we do the facade grant, or make your stick now? Because we still have the, facade grant's a separate action.
Ah. I guess I can do it. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for having us here tonight, and I wanted to let you all know how happy we are to be having a brick and mortar location in downtown Batavia after three years of suffering from working out of our home. We've just really outgrown our space, so we are so excited. Even more so, we are thrilled to be in the downtown area. That was just something I didn't think was going to happen, and it was an amazing opportunity, so we are beyond excited. The building itself, initially, we kind of went into it a little bit blindly. We didn't really know what we were getting into with a 150-year-old-plus building, that's four stories, totally made out of limestone. So, progress on the building has not moved as quickly as we wanted, because there was a lot of research that had to be done, and a lot of deliberations as to what would be the best process to shore up the building and make sure that it stood for another 100 years. So, with that, we finally came to the conclusion, the best method to fix the floors, and we have a plan in place now. The floors, obviously, were the biggest concern of ours, so once we are able to start construction on those, hopefully, within the next few weeks of demolition, and then starting with the actual construction portion of it. Okay, do you want to?
You want to show the pictures? Sure. Jamie did some renderings of the interior space. We can show some of that here.
Sure.
Okay, so, this is just a rendering of the showroom space, as we would like to see it when it is completed, looking out onto Wilson with those fantastic, big, large windows on the first floor. That's more of the same shot. That is looking west, and this is what you would see if you were walking by at the street level. So, we are an interior design studio, and our focus is on kitchen and bath and all-around home improvement.
The last meeting we were at, Mayor Shelkey was discussing his vision for that downtown Riverwalk area, and it didn't go unnoticed. It's something that we would like to incorporate into like a phase two of the building. We don't need the entire lower level below street level, so the interior design space is going to use the street level and then the level, the second story above, for a meeting area, but we do have a vision for the lower level incorporating something in the future, to be determined, but it's something that we do want to utilize and hope to, you know, brighten that area up a little bit, as you discussed a couple of weeks ago.
Need space.
It is, very nice, very neat space. Any questions from the council?
Do you have any questions? Alderman Brown?
No questions, I don't think, Your Honor, but just a comment. I'm certainly supportive of this award of these grants, for quite a few different reasons. I mean, first of all, they all fall within the criteria that the city council set aside for what we're trying to accomplish with the downtown. I can't think of a better building, probably, in the downtown that we should award these grants to. When I think back of, I don't know how many years ago it was, that the city council actually took over that building, the city of Batavia took over that building through condemnation because there were holes in the roof, and there were pigeons living in there, and, I mean, it was a situation that you didn't even want to go into when you walked in that front door, and the city at that time took over the property to try to get it back into some condition where we could do something with it. I think the ultimate goal at that time, I'm sure the goal at that time was to sell the property, get it back on the tax rolls. For quite some time, the council kept it and used it for an incubator space. It worked out very well for that, but the city council recently has decided that they wish to sell it. The people in front of us here tonight have purchased it. They've got, I think, some great plans of what they want to do here. It's going to bring retail to our downtown, it's going to bring people to our downtown, and it's putting the building into a condition that, as they said, should keep it up for another 100 or so years, so I certainly am going to support this, and I thank you for doing this.
Anybody else? Want to make a motion?
I would. I move that the city council passed Resolution 18-125-R, application for downtown improvement grant and facade grant at 2 East Main Street in the amount of $23,538, or 50% of the actual cost of the project, whichever is less.
Second.
Motion, Alderman Stark, Sir Alderman Brown, for the approval of Resolution 18-125-R. Any discussion? Alderman Metzler?
Just a quick clarification, looking at the resolution on page one, it's referring to $23,538, or 50% of the cost. On page three, it's a different number, $23,368. So, do we need to revise this resolution? Sorry, page four.
Yes, I'm sorry, it needs to read $23,368, and I'll get the corrected version, Alan, if that's convenient for the council.
Is this a typo that occurred?
Yeah, it's a typo, it's a little dyslexic or something, but it is 23,368, and that number's important in that, when you combine it with a facade grant, they both, they don't exceed $25,000.
Correct.
Good catch, I appreciate that, and I will make the correction, apologize for it.
We have a motion, and second on the floor, for the approval of the resolution as corrected. Court, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Resolution 18-125-R is approved, 13 S, no, no, absent. Moving to item 12, which is Resolution 18-126-R, awarding a facade improvement grant to Batavia Platform Properties. Alderman Stark, do you have this one?
I do. This is the same building, same applicant. This is for a cost of $1,632, or 50% of the actual project, whichever is less, to reimburse costs for a certain exterior improvement activity, which is repairing the second-floor windows in the building at the address of 2 East Wilson Street. And this came out of the council, or committed the whole with a positive recommendation, so I make a motion that we approve Resolution 18-126-R, a resolution awarding a grant under the facade improvement grant program to Batavia Platform Properties LLC at 2 East Wilson at Two East Wilson Street.
Second.
Move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Er for the approval of resolution one-twenty-six dash R, facade improvement grant for Platform Properties. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzen?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no, no, one absent. Well, thank you for your commitment to our downtown, and we wish you many years of business, growth, and success on the east side bank.
All right. Thank you, council and the city, and we look forward to getting started. Thank you.
All right, moving to thirteen, which is resolution eighteen dash one-twenty-seven dash R, the two thousand nineteen City of Batavia annual budget. Alderman, Atech, do you have this?
Yes, I do. So, after several discussions and a public hearing, the committee of the whole recommended approval of this budget to the city council. And this is a budget that does not increase taxes, we're benefiting from an increase in EAV, and we're able to keep it balanced and hire a few more folks. So, are there any questions, comments?
Susan?
I am going to support this budget as written, however, I do so with a few reservations in that we are adding to the levy, which I'm supportive of, only if we come up with a spending plan, because I am not in favor of just bringing in more taxes without a plan. So, I recommend that before the first quarter of the next year ends, we have a spending plan in place where we can allocate the funds, whether it's in roads or improvements somewhere in town, but not just to continue to collect reserves based on what could potentially happen. So, I will support the budget as written now, and this is my last year on the council, so what happens next year, I won't have a part of, but I definitely want to be part of the plan going forward in terms of how the money is going to be spent on these improvements we keep talking about, but never moving forward with.
Alan?
I just wanted to clarify that it's no change in the tax rate.
Right.
We still will be bringing in more money, and I think Susan is definitely correct, that that was one of the things that I think hit me going through this, was, yeah, we have a plan that says we only have, we have a minimum in our reserves of the ninety days, but we have a hundred-and-eighty days as our maximum. And we need to figure out how to get that more, to my mind, realistic, that if we go over that in our reserves, we take that money in whatever percentage or however we decide to divvy that up, that at that point, that goes into the accounts for capital improvements for whatever we determine they need to be. Because I think that's very important, that we steward that money into those projects so that that happens. Because I think that's something that we have all agreed on, in our strategic planning, that that is very important, so we need to do it.
Alderman Brown?
What Alderman Wolf and Alderman Stark have just mentioned was also discussed at the committee of the whole meeting, and our city administrator has been directed to work with our finance director, and come back to us sometime in January or February, so we can start having that discussion about the reserves. So, I think we're well on our way to what you're talking about.
Anybody else? Alderman Brown?
I might just say, you know, we've been doing it all according to the rules we've, we've set forth, that we've not gone over the ceiling for that, and we did discuss that we'll maybe drop that ceiling. But I wouldn't want to drop it too much. I mean, again, I know I bring up climate change a lot, and things are changing, but, you know, we just had a tornado in Illinois this past week, and so, and there are townships that are being destroyed totally in California, and if something, you know, catastrophic were to come to Batavia, we would need every dime in that reserve. And so, I'd be a little, I can, I can understand lowering the ceiling, but I wouldn't be robust in, in, in the lowering of it, I'd be somewhat judicious.
Mayor?
Alderman Atech?
My understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, if we do nothing to increase our taxes going forward, or increase our revenues, that the reserves will just decline naturally, the way our long-term plan goes right now.
Yes.
So, we don't have extra reserves to play around with at this point. And my hope is, as we're coming up with deciding how, where we're gonna, what we're gonna do with our strategic plan, that we start thinking about ways to increase our EAV. What are we going to do to improve our town so that our EAV increases? Like sidewalks, like better, other pedestrian, things, pedestrian infrastructure, things that are known to make our real estate more valuable, because that will be an easy way to increase our taxes without increasing the rate. You know, it concerns me, because we're kind of being, we're so afraid of increasing taxes, that we're going to get ourselves into a situation where we're going, we're going to leave a huge expenditure burden for the future councils and generations. But I will support the budget as proposed.
Any other question? Alderman Chanzen?
I would support the budget, I would support everything about this, I apologize for missing the last committee meeting. I appreciate the discussions that we had, because it sounds like that we identified tens of millions of dollars of projects that need to be done, and it sounds like this council is willing to tackle some projects that we have been avoiding for probably the better part of ten years.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman? Callahan?
Yeah, I also, unfortunately, was missing last week, was in the ER, not for the boys for a change. But as a part of that, I did watch what was going on while my daughter and I were waiting. And I understand all the points that everyone's making, but what kept coming back to me is that the rate in the last ten years has gone from fifty-four cents to seventy-four cents. And last year was the highest rate that we have had in the past at least ten years. And I was checking that on my own tax bill. And the reason why it was high that year was because we had specific projects, and we were hiring for additional police officers, and the, the building inspector. And as a result of that, that's why everyone was on board. And we also did spending of the reserves for projects, legitimate projects, that we knew we needed for the rainy day funds. I know that the concern about drawing the funds down for the inevitable potential natural disaster, and how do you prepare for those things? Well, therein lies my line of work with insurance. You predict it, you do underwriting, you do actuarials, you run the probability of it. And over the years, we set the reserve policy, not at ninety days, but at sixty days, which that's crazy ridiculous, it should be higher. But being as it is sixty days right now, if something came in today and wiped away the city, you'd have sixty days to run the city. Well, when we talk about natural disasters and all of that, it's not just our money that's going to be, when Washington, Illinois is taken out, it's not their reserves that are doing that, that is way too high a cost to be borne on a city. That's why there is federal funding, that's why there is state funding, all the emergency funding, all the insurance that comes to part of it. They're not necessarily using their reserves to do it. And that's not what it would be for anyways, it would be to pay the police, to pay the fire, to keep the streets and the lights on, and all of that. It's not to rebuild, it's never meant to be the rebuilding. So then I go back to, why are we, I know that the talk was holding the line, and that is a great thing, that we are holding the line for something. But we're holding the line on the highest tax revenue that has been coming in, and we have to understand that we know there will never, ever, ever, ever be enough money to collect from residents to do all the things that always need to be done. But what you do is you plan it. And since I've been on, congratulations that we have been setting forth a plan and doing those things that I know that Alderman Chanzen has said over the years that have been kicked down the road. They haven't been, and we've had those times where we've made those tax increases for specific reasons. This year, we are able to do the plans that we set out, and still sit on the reserves, and not draw it down where we wouldn't have to collect as much. Because the thing that concerns me is weighing this, like I said previously, you're weighing out the balance of collecting as much as you can, and doing all those things that need to be done. Well, we can't add any more projects for next year, because they're swamped. If, like Dave says, they're overburdened, we wouldn't put more on them with things that need to be going on at Prairie Street. Main Street's going to be incredibly huge, so we wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it would be negligent, almost, to throw more projects at them to get stuff done. It's doing them when you can. So that twenty cents that has been from two thousand and seven, at fifty-four cents, to seventy-four cents now, some of it's necessary, because we know the pension costs. But the other part that we have is, we have a segment of our community, that their wages and salaries haven't increased commensurate to that same dollar amount. And, and I think that should be weighing in our consideration, too. Just as much as we're trying to make sure that we're getting projects done, just as much as we're trying to make sure that we're giving our employees the tools that they need, because I know what public service employees need, because I was one, and I'm pretty sure I'm the only one that was. And from that, I do understand what public employees go through. They are as hardworking as a regular private sector job, and that gets thrown out there, it gets disparaged, because they believe the perception is public employees are living off the public good. Well, there's trade-offs that you have with that, you have job security, instead of going in, in the private sector worrying about getting fired. But you also do what the private sector, what the public sector doesn't have, is this desire to serve the community. That comes at a cost to the employees, and you know that. And so we try to give them as much as we can, while also understanding the constraints that we have on our fellow residents, and how much we're asking of them, not burdening them, because I think we ought to get away from that as a taxation, as a burden, because it's not. You use streets, you use sidewalks, what you've got to find is the balance between how much people can afford, and how we can get things done, and what our public employees need.
Alderman Er?
Yeah, obviously, I had a lot to say at committee of the whole, so I won't say much right now. In general, I'm okay with the budget. I mean, again, it's, there's a lot of projects and stuff that we need to get done, and I recognize that. My only wish was that we didn't go all in on all the employee hiring that we decided to do, and we could have probably lowered the taxes had we not decided that we were going to go all the way in, because that just is creating a long-term burden when it comes to pensions, that we all know exists, so I'm not in support of it because of that.
Alderman Metzler?
Similarly, from the discussions at the committee level, I'm not in support of this budget. I, I struggle too much with, with obviously the reserves that we have on hand, I understand that the five-year forecast, which is assuming absolutely no changes, which, if we look at the last five years, there have been changes, so I don't know how much you can rely on that. It is an indicator, I'm not dismissing it, but we all should acknowledge, too, that that typically is not a reality as well. And just a quick clarification, the general fund level for reserves is, I understand it, is sixty days, not ninety, it's the utility funds that are ninety days. My, my struggle with this one, again, was the addition to the pensions. You know, that's, that is where we need to absolutely make sure that we are taking care of the city, and, and the people that work for our city, to make it this beautiful place. And, and I'm just struggling with where that did not get it creatively resolved, so that it isn't becoming a longer-term burden on our, on our funding debt. So, I'm not in support of this budget as it is.
Alderman Malley?
Yes, I do support this budget. The, in terms of the reserves, we have a policy in place, and we are within the basement and the ceiling currently, as you pointed out, Alderman O'Brien. That's not to say that that can't be looked at, and I think it should be looked, I think we should regularly do that, looking at it. I am concerned about if, if we did drop that, that ceiling down too much, and, or even the basement, to have reserves to smooth out things that are unexpected. With that said, I also think there's a number of projects we want to do, and so I'm not opposed to looking at what that ceiling and floor and ceiling are, to be able to start setting money aside specifically aimed at addressing some of these things that we want to do. In terms of the, the new, new hires within this budget, the majority of them, I think two or three of them are IMRF, and they would most likely be tier two. Their, the pension obligation on those is not as much as the, the police officer pension is, would be significantly greater liability. But I think we're still, from my understanding, at a lower staff level than we were before the recession. The, the staff has identified places where it can be beneficial to have in-house employees take on stuff. I'm always leery of outsourcing stuff, because we lose organizational memory when that happens, and the ability to, you know, have our own people be the, the keepers of the, of the keys, so to say. So, for that, I, I am in support of this budget.
Alderman Atech?
I have a couple of questions. What was the tax rate when you started to be mayor?
My first term, it was up to a dollar five.
So, it has come down over the years. And our tax rate, Peggy, is very low compared to the surrounding communities, I mean, there's a base rate, there's a base amount of money need to operate a city, and we're about as low as any city, is that correct?
Right. In the last fifteen years, in the Fox Valley area, we were the lowest tax rate in nine of those fifteen years, and only in the last year did Geneva go lower.
And is their EAV much higher than ours, Geneva's, or is that St. Charles?
Uh, St. Charles EAV is higher than ours, but their rate is also higher.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Chanzen?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I don't want to make it sound like we weren't doing work for the last ten years, but we did just get done with a strategic plan. A lot of the items on that are kind of like a wish list, so we don't actually need to do all of them, you know, in the next year. But Gary's been very clear with this, that our streets are not on an appropriate maintenance schedule. We have drainage projects that still need to be done, while we have made some wonderful progress on them, we have tens of millions that we still could do, and if you believe Mike, we have pipes that need to be even larger than what we're, than what we're planning for, and I tend to agree. Riverbank stabilization is on that list, it is high on that list. We've spoken about the Depot Pond, and coming up with some sort of solution for the dam, and if we are going to build a second bridge, we absolutely have not set aside a fund for it. So, all I'm getting at is, if we're going to hold the line, we absolutely have to talk about how we're going to fund those projects. I feel like we continue to kick some of those projects, kick that can down, down the road, and I think we're being disingenuous with our, our neighbors by saying that we're going to hold the line, when we know that we need to pay for, we know we need, we need to pay for these things eventually, and I don't think EAV is going to cut, is going to cut it.
I, I agree, but I, absolutely, I agree with everything you're saying, but I think that is one thing we need to do. I think it's a multi-prong approach.
And we're out of gas tax. We're at the ceiling.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Alderman Salvati?
Well, first, I want, I appreciate the, the budget that we've put together. The one, I want to go back to the discussion we had, Mark touched on this a little earlier, and this was, you know, our hiring practices as far as with pension obligations. And while, you know, we're talking about tier-two pension obligations, there's still pension obligations. So, I mean, if it looks like a duck and it sounds like a duck, it's a duck.
much help as possible, but I think we need to be careful about how that help is implemented. And, and that is, and I don't take that lightly, you know, we are, there are municipalities, there are private sectors, they are getting killed by pension obligations. And, you know, we've got a big hit coming up in a few, in a few years too, because of that. So, I just want to, I just want to state again, we have to make those decisions very, very carefully.
I just would want to just turn in here, when you start talking about our budget, our number in comparison to the neighbors, the wild card in the room is the fire department. And what one has to do when you start comparing municipal budgets is, is that you cannot compare Batavia to our neighbors at West Chicago, North Aurora, or Elburn, because they don't have municipal fire departments like Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles do, where that fire department funding is included in this 74 cents. You go out to Elburn, or you go to North Aurora, or you go to West Chicago, they got a fire department, fire protection district that's got a budget that maybe exceeds the City of Batavia's total budget by itself. So, I mean, it's a real mixed bag here, and I mean, if there's a drain on us right now, I mean, it is in the public safety arena. I can tell you, just reading the, the intricate police reports that we're dealing with every day, that's not going down, that's going up, and the complexion of the problem is becoming more and more serious as time marches forward. I was in a meeting the other day with a bunch of mayors who are scratching their heads about what we're going to do when we legalize marijuana, and what kind of impact that's going to have on the police business, because there's some things thinking that it's going to have a significant impact on it. Last week, when we had the big snowstorm, goodness knows, our Public Works rose up and did a fabulous job, but we had all those people on overtime, and that was a fairly nifty cost, but we needed to spend it, and we got a great job done, and everybody rose to the occasion. But, I mean, those things cost money. But, so, as a result, it's pretty hard to, you know, kind of ID a budget and say, well, you're going to stay within this amount, and you're going to stay within that amount. I know from the Batavia Fire Department, right now, they're averaging over 12 calls a day now. And back in the day, when I was on the fire department, and I agree with you, that was a long time ago, but we thought we were doing something when we had one call a day. Now, we're at 12 calls a day, and last Sunday night during that event that we had, I don't think the boys and girls in the fire department went to bed all night long, they were out 31 times on various calls. So, I mean, there's things that happen that you cannot budget for, you can't calculate, you can't figure, and we are very fortunate, in my opinion, that we've got a, a financial staff under Peggy Colby that really has put reins on this thing and keeps very good track of what's going on here. And I would credit a lot of why we are as low as we are, because of her management and Laura overseeing it, that we're not going off here half crazy someplace and dropping a bunch of money in a bad position. Any department head that gets themselves into any type of an issue, they can look forward to being, have, coming down to City Hall and having a, you know, a discussion with the, with the gals about what's really happening here and their, in their financial respective. So, I, I think we're in pretty good shape. I would encourage us to approve this budget. Nothing further, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
I need a motion. I make a motion. I would like to move that we approve, excuse me, Resolution 18-127-R, the 2019 City of Batavia annual, annual budget.
Second.
Motion by ATAC, second by Stark. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
No.
So, that final vote is?
Eight to five.
Eight, eight yes, five no, motions approved. All right, moving then to item number 15, which is ordinance 18-74, 2018 tax levy for special service area 30, Prairie Trail South detention. Who's got this?
Oh.
You skipped one.
Yeah.
I think the actual levy.
The tax, tax levy for?
Okay, okay, ordinance 18-72, City of Batavia tax levy. Alderman ATAC.
Okay, I, going along with the budget that we just approved, I move that we approve the tax levy ordinance for the year 2017, ordinance 18-72, and I believe it's in the amount of $7,257,630.
Second.
Moved by AL, Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of Resolution 18-72- dash, nothing, I guess. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
No.
That one again is eight yes, five no. All right, then we move to 15, which is ordinance 18-74, 2018 tax levy for special service area 30, Prairie Trail South. Alderman ATAC?
Yes, this is for stormwater, a stormwater detention area. The amount levied is $6,800. I move that we pass ordinance 18-74 tax levy ordinance for the year 2018 for special service area number 30.
Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of ordinance 18-74 for the special service area 30 of the Prairie Trail South subdivision detention. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
No.
So, that one is approved by a vote of 12 yes, one no, one absent. Okay, moving then to item 16, which is ordinance 18-75, 2018 tax levy for special service area 62, Batavia Main Street. Alderman ATAC?
Yes, this is in the amount of $27,000. I move that we approve the tax levy ordinance 18-75 for the year 2018 for special service area number 62.
Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of ordinance 18-75, the 2018 tax levy for special service area 62 for Batavia Main Street. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
No.
So, that one is approved by a vote of 12 yes, one no, one absent. Okay, moving then to item 16, which is ordinance 18-75, 2018 tax levy for special service area 62, Batavia Main Street. Alderman ATAC?
Yes, this is in the amount of $27,000. I move that we approve the tax levy ordinance 18-75 for the year 2018 for special service area number 62.
Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of ordinance 18-75, the 2018 tax levy for special service area 62 for Batavia Main Street. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
No.
So, that one is approved by a vote of 12 yes, one no, one absent. Moving to 17, which is ordinance 18-76, an ordinance increasing municipal retail motor fuel tax and amending Title III, Chapter 23, Section 3 of the Batavia Municipal Code. Alderman ATAC?
Yes, this is for a one-cent increase per gallon for a total tax of 5 cents. I move that we approve ordinance 18-66, sorry, ordinance 18-76 increase to motor, local motor fuel tax.
Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Chanet, for the approval of ordinance 18-76, increasing the municipal motor fuel tax. Any discussion? Alderman, Chanet?
I would just note that according to Gas Buddy at this hour, there's a 50-cent disparity in prices in gas, $2.35 in St. Charles and $1.85 in Batavia. That was the price when there was a Bush in office in 2009. So, I think the additional penny will go unnoticed.
Any other discussion? Alderman, Callahan?
I just had a question from, it was when I was listening last week. Peggy, you made the suggestion regarding delaying for one year. Can you just explain upon that?
There had just been discussion about how to use reserves, and I had just made the suggestion that if you decided you didn't want to go ahead with the gas tax this year, that you could use reserves.
And that would have been how much?
About $200,000.
Okay.
All right. Chanet?
I'm not in support of it this year, simply because we've raised the gas tax for the past two years, and I think that the burden falls pretty much on the independent gas, gas station owners in town, and I, I would be in favor of waiting a while before doing that again. And I think that they're, at this point, I'll leave it at that.
Other comments? Alderman, Callahan?
Yeah, and I agree with Lucy on this one, that it was last year, the year before that, that we've continually, this has been the go-to. However, I'm in support of this one because of what it's doing, in that it's transferring the, it's freeing up the money for the streets to do what we need to do with streets, and it is one of those ones that does, you're buying gas for streets, so it makes sense, and it's freeing up for that police officer position. I am intrigued, though, about the, using the reserves for this year, since we haven't used any reserves for anything, doing it, it's kind of the splitting the baby of using the reserves for one year and delaying it for one year as was potentially offered. And I would be, go ahead.
We are using reserves this year, correct, Peggy?
That's correct, you're using reserves for $471,000 of capital purchases.
So, instead of taking the capital out of the operational money, it's coming out of the reserves. So, don't forget, we're spending $461,000 out of our reserves this year. So, we are using the reserves, one, to keep from having to add that to the tax bill.
Any other? Alderman O'Brien?
I guess I'm going to say I support this. I mean, when we first started doing this four years ago, I wanted to do the max four years ago. When I drive by a, a, a gas station, I see, you know, it might be at 235, and then over the course of three or four weeks, it drops down to 198, and the next two days, it's up to 240. And people still pull into the gas station and buy their gas. And this money we need for our roads, and as Gary has said in the past, our roads are falling behind in, in maintenance of our roads. And so, I, I support this, I think it's much needed, and, and, you know, it's not just Batavians paying this, this tax, it's anyone driving through our town, stopping at, you know, on Route, on Route, on Batavia Avenue, on Kirk Road, anyone, on Randall Road, driving through our town, they stop and buy gas. It's, it's people outside of our town also putting money towards our roads.
Alderman Metzner?
First off, I do want to again thank the two gentlemen that came down at the Cow Meeting last week, both Stan and Harry, that was great to hear from them, and I think it helped frame this in my mind a lot more. There's a very big difference between the two of them who are operating right here in our downtown off of 31, and the other stations that are perhaps on the larger throughputs of Randall Road and Kirk Road, and, and so, that is definitely something to, to keep in mind. Not all gas stations are created equal. And I think that, I was definitely on the fence about this one, I am going to still support this one, but hearing from them really started to make me pause about, is this always the one that should have been kept going to? The reason I appreciate this one is because it does call out specifically that this is exclusively for streets, period, nothing else done. And we know that there's a lot of street improvements that have to be done. I do think that, it's not that Batavia has fallen behind on infrastructure of roads, nationally, everywhere, roads are behind in, in terms of maintenance. So, I just want to be careful about framing that one. Batavia has not neglected the roads. Everywhere, the roads have been neglected. I think actually Batavia has done well to try and stay above the national average with streets. That's not to say that there aren't still bad streets that do need work, because there are.
Well, I wasn't knocking the City of Batavia, I can assure you, I've been on the council for 10 years now, and, and I've always been supportive of maintaining our streets. But I would argue that the fact that the state of California, the roads in California are somewhat excellent, I mean, barring fires, fires and things, they don't have a frost, a frost-free factor that they have to deal with, and so, the roads are excellent, so, but the City of Batavia does what they can with the resources they have, absolutely.
All right. Salvati?
A little case study that I did after we had the gentleman come down on Tuesday night. So, on Thursday, I pulled, I had to get some gas, had to get my coffee, was going north, so I decided to pull into Shell, and it was $2.29 a gallon. I said, oh, that's interesting, looked across the street, Mobil was $2.09 a gallon. Oh, it's interesting, I'll get my coffee, I'll go back around and go to Mobil. So, and Stan was out there, and he's like, yeah, they're asleep at the switch, I don't know what they're doing. So, and sure, and he said, I'm going to go down to $1.99 on Friday. Sure enough, he did, Shell stayed at $2.29 all weekend. So, they have, they have the ability to do what they want.
It's 10 cents apart today.
It's still split, you know, and so, I mean, I, I think it's, there's, there's a little more elasticity there than we, than we might think. I am in support of this. What's taken us to, you know, to our 5-cent cap, that's going to be it. I appreciate everything they do, I will keep, I will still buy coffee, and I will still gas up downtown.
I don't think the story's that simple, given that Stan's been in business a long time, and we have a new gas station owner that just came in and really improved that corner. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but there are real reasons why there's this disparity.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I don't think it's so easy to just say he could lower it.
He could.
Well, but we want him to stay in town and in business.
Sure, absolutely, he has to be competitive though, too.
He does need to be competitive.
So, we have a motion, and second on the floor for the approval of ordinance 18-76?
We don't.
We don't?
So, moved.
Second. We, we had a motion.
We did?
Okay.
Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. All right, so much for the ordinances. Moving to 18, the administrative report. Laura?
Well, I have a lot of exciting projects to talk about today, but I bet the only thing anybody wants to hear about tonight are leaves and sticks. So, I'll start off with that good information. Scott Haynes provided me with an update this morning that the street division crews will have three leaf collection machines on the east side starting tomorrow, December 4th, to collect as many piles of leaves as they can get to and that they can see. And then we're going to start where we left off at the end of the day on November 21st and continue south from there. So if there's already been a pickup on that street, there isn't going to be a second pickup on the street. And then once they get completely through the east side, then they'll start the collection, the final collection back on the west side. Also, crews are continuing to work on fallen trees from the winter storm last Sunday into Monday. And in fact, our electric crews are, continue to be out there to repair some of the damages that were happening. We do have crews out there collecting any damaged trees that people have hauled to the curb, starting this morning. So we're out there picking up all of that debris to citywide. Does anybody have any questions about either the leaf pickup or the brush pickup? I, I also want to mention that we're now in the period post-December 1st, where Advance will pick up the, the leaf and debris lawn bags for free in the month of December. So if you can, if you want to get your leaves into those bags, they'll get picked up for free. Okay, in community and economic development, we've issued three new overhead permits for the Metronet cabling project. As we move into the winter, they're not going to be doing any more of the ground excavation, and they're going to be doing whatever they can overhead. We have had the individual start as our new building inspector and code enforcement officer last Monday. He's getting acquainted with our specific codes in the city. And we're really happy to have him join our team, and he should be ready for the 2019 building year. Planning staff is also waiting for the final documents for the Windmill Landings project. There are several plats that the developer needs to provide before we can record the project documents. And then also, the plan commission approved the design review and plat for the two speculative industrial buildings on Nego Boulevard. And that plat will be in front of the Committee of the Hall on December 11th. And we're continuing to review the revised submittal for the Winding Creek development on the Land Meyer Farm property on McKee Street. And this will be on the special plan commission on December 12th. And I think that, I'll mention this, Dave, for you, that the plan commission meetings for December 5th and 19th will be canceled, and a special meeting will be held on December 12th, so that we can be sure that we have a quorum at that meeting to decide on that project. Also, we've received development applications for the Old Avenue Chevy site on Randall Road and McKee Street. So we're excited about, hoping that that is going to move forward, and we'll finally see some development on that site. Also, the, the staff has scheduled land swap with the park district. There are some city parking areas that are adjacent to their administrative building on the west side. And they are willing to swap some of the parking spaces that are located along the, the river behind actually the, the Tom Lee building. And we already have some parking spaces there. And so we wanted to combine those together to look, to provide some additional public parking in our downtown area by cooperating with the other landowner there. So hopefully, we'll be able to add to our inventory of downtown parking spaces. The streets crew is actively engaged in our winter operations. It really makes it difficult when we haven't finished our leaf and brush pickup, but we have to be ready at any second to go out there and plow the streets. But I definitely want to just say what an extraordinary job that they did that day. It was a pretty challenging storm, even though we didn't get as many inches of snow that were expected. The snow was so heavy and so hard to move. And then it really froze up a lot the next morning. And that was the end of them going on their second eight hours of plowing that snow. So kudos to them for how clean they got those streets. And also to the electric crews who are out there responding to every one of the calls where, with the downed wires. And also our police and fire department who also had to respond where there were downed wires to make sure that everyone was safe. So everybody worked as a great team in, in our hours of need there. I think that's all that I have, unless you have some specific questions for me. Alderman Salvati?
Just to chime in on, on the streets, it was wonderful to see social media, which tends to be a black hole of negativity. There, it was predominantly very positive and supportive of everything that streets did, and, which was awesome, because you guys did a great job.
And the electric utility.
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
And to kind of go along with that electric utility, like Mike says a lot, look how long ComEd was out. I mean, they were talking, I mean, they were 24 hours plus. I think they're still out.
Forty-eight.
Twenty-four, forty-eight hours. And they had to call 650-some people from the east coast in to do it. So we've been, this fall and late summer took a kind of a hit for the blurbs that we were having with those, with those issues. But again, none of those were out for more than an hour. And yet, so everybody was griping about the, our electric utility. But then when you have to just trade that off and go, look what we did have, and look how long we did go out for, for that same weather event, because it's the same power lines, it's the same equipment, ours didn't go out for that long. So kudos to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Alderman Brown, any comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow evening's Committee of the Hall will begin at 7:00 PM. These, as Laura mentioned, the two plan commission meetings have been canceled for December 5th and the later on in the month. But we do have that special meeting scheduled for December 12th. The next Committee of the Hall meeting beyond tomorrow evening is going to be December 11th. That begins at 7:00 PM. One item for the community development issues, and that would be resolution 18 dash 129R, which is approval of the preliminary plat of subdivision for the Farmstead 3, Unit 2 subdivision, which is on Nego Boulevard. It's a lot split that we've had a little bit of discussion about. And that's all I have, Your Honor. Oh, Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet December 10th, Monday at 5:30 PM. That's all I have.
Very good. Community Services, Alderman ATEC?
Yes, tomorrow night we'll discuss wage ordinances and an employee agreement. And December 11th, there'll be a budget amendment for health insurance premiums.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Nothing on any of the Cow meetings for the next two weeks. Just a reminder to everybody, if it does snow again, to dig out the fire hydrants near your houses. And also, if you get the chance when you're out blowing snow or shoveling snow, to clean out the drains along the streets.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Your Honor, Public Utilities has nothing for the remainder of the year.
Good news. Twenty, other business? Anybody have any other business? Twenty-one, the mayor's report. I just want to make the offering up to you. I was, I've been going to the city a lot with my other role as CMAP, Chairman of the CMAP Council of Mayors. Our discussions here seem to get some regional notoriety. It gets printed in the paper, and I think what Mark writes and Susan's written, it goes online, and other towns pick it up. And I'm not going to mention any towns by name, but I've, I've been in Chicago now, and I've had three mayors in my face wanting to know, could they come out to Batavia and learn our secret of how do we keep a tax rate at 74 cents? And then after last week and the storm we had, just picking up on what Alderman Callahan just mentioned, I've had several of our neighboring mayors say to me, how did you keep the lights on like you did? Because some of them were, don't have municipal owned electric utility, and some of them were, had people in the dark for a long, 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 long time. So just so